You ready? All right, welcome everybody to the Bonner Springs Planning Commission Regular Meeting for April 15th, 2025. I call the regular meeting to order at 6:33 PM. At this time, would the Community Development Director take role?
Ms. Neff?
Here.
Mr. Clark? Mr. Perica? Mr. Mesmer? Mr. Bombardier? Mr. Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Gabauer?
Here.
Let the record show that Mr. Zeps is absent this evening.
All right, on the consent agenda, Agenda Item Number Two is the approval of the minutes of the February 18th, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting. Has everyone had the opportunity to review the minutes and are there any comments or corrections? There are. Jerry, did you have any?
I have two corrections, I can only find one. Paul Barrett, on the second paragraph down, talks about where he lives in the Chamber of Commerce and then the third sentence where it says, "They are a Chamber member," the "H" is missing.
All right, at this time, call for a motion?
I move the minutes be approved as amended.
All right, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Agenda Item Number Three is unfinished business, none at this time. Agenda Item Number Four is the public hearing for the Special Use Permit SUP 0225, Country Stampede. At this time, could we have the staff report, please?
Okay, the request is associated with the Country Stampede Music Festival, being the festival's second year in Bonner Springs and at the Azura Amphitheater, several items have been taken into consideration once again. With the success of the 2024 event, city staff expects nothing but continued success and has worked with the promoters to ensure this happens. The applicant is again requesting the use of a portion of Azura Amphitheater's parking lot for large recreational vehicle parking, along with a portion of the Agriculture Hall of Fame property for recreational vehicles and primitive camping. These areas are designated on the included site layouts in your packets. The Unified Government of Wyandotte County, along with the Ag Hall of Fame, have provided letters of consent granting permission for the camping to occur. The event promoters have worked with staff, the Police Department, Fire Department, and the Public Works Department during the process. Police and fire have been in contact with surrounding agencies to ensure smooth operations from an emergency services perspective. While the request is in conjunction with a large music festival, the ultimate authority of the Planning Commission lies within the land use aspect only. Recently, amendments were made to the camping regulations allowing for camping on private property with proper permits for a period of up to 96 hours. And the city's Unified Development Ordinance, Section 2.03. B, Special Uses, Section 1 and 2, Planning Commission, and the governing body are authorized to recommend and approve special use permits in accordance with special uses by zoning districts when required by the Table of Uses. Stipulations are provided in staff's report. We have increased the length this year to three years. With the success and the limited number of issues that we had at last year's festival, we increased it three to see how it would go for those. The acts are getting bigger, could lead to more patrons and more things, so we went three years. So again, those stipulations are all listed within the staff report.
All right, at this time, I'll call for a motion to open the public hearing. All right, public hearing is opened at 6:37 PM. At this time, would any member of the public like to speak in favor of this issue? If so, please approach the microphone and state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Dave Hurlbrink, 4015 North 111th Street, KCK. I stand before you as the Chairman of the Board of Governors of the Agricultural Hall of Fame, and I would simply like to state that we are in favor of this and would urge you to approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this issue? All right. Is there anyone that would like to speak against this issue? Or, okay. All right. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
As a long-term volunteer at the Ag Hall, I would like to speak in favor of it myself. I serve both in the spring and in the fall, and the vast majority of people that come there and visit that place do not understand that it draws no money from the federal government, the state government, the county government, or the city government. It operates on volunteer labor. One of the things that we hope, by what we have heard, is that the county, Country Stampede, would like to establish that area as a yearly meeting place. And because we draw some rent money from those people, we would like to see them to come. It simply helps us in our financial situation. That said, you know where I stand.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments or questions at this time? All right. Anybody have any questions for the applicant? All right, I'll call for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All right, public hearing is closed at 6:40 PM. This time, I'll call for a motion regarding the special use permit.
I move the special use permit be granted, subject to staff recommendations.
Is there a second?
My second.
All right. This time, is there any discussion amongst the commission? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bombardier? Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Mesmer?
Yes.
Ms. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. Perica?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Gabauer?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
All right, this will proceed to the City Council meeting on May 12th for final action. All right, at this time, we are, Agenda Item Number Five, Public Hearing for Special Use Permit SUP 0125. We could have the staff report, please.
This is a long one, and I don't know that I want to read it all, but, so, February, we had a special use permit hearing for this request. It was approved and proceeded to council. Council restricted that to one year due to public concern, as well as a protest petition that had been filed. During that time, I had rescheduled this public hearing looking forward and thinking we would need to revisit it. Since then, we've also had a, or A-PAC conducted a public information meeting here at City Hall last Thursday, that more concerns and some other stipulations were drawn out of that conversation. The staff report, the staff recommendations have been amended three times since the last. There is a new staff report in front of you that lists those current stipulations. The one that was in your packet was put together and given out before the public information meeting, so I didn't have time to add those stipulations. We, we will, we have an individual that's here representing several of the homeowners. He will be allowed to speak, obviously, but what I would like to do is set a time limit of five minutes for other individuals. Mr. Rob Richardson has been here representing some of the residents for the past few meetings, and he's continuing to do that. So what I will do is allow him to speak a little longer than the others, and then if there's more public comments, we'll have those held to five minutes. The stipulations have grown, and I would, I would like to go through them one at a time, but I don't know if now is the time. I think, let's have the public hearing, if you don't mind, sir, and see what concerns are voiced, and we will go from there. Let's see. I'm just trying to think if there's anything that had really changed in the actual staff report, other than the stipulations. There is a comment in there about how they held their public information meeting, but other than that, most of the staff report remain the same. And unless you'd like me to read it and go into detail, I will leave it at that.
No, is, let's see, is Item 3, with the changes there, is that the?
So there's some that have underlines, underlining, those were added or changed, and then there's a couple others that have asterisks that were also added in. Those, some of those came out of the conversations Thursday evening, the 10th. The ones with the asterisks are most of those, the other ones that were underlined were ones that I, I put in.
Okay.
As I reviewed it.
Well, at this time, call for a motion to open the public hearing.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
First. Exactly what are we doing? I mean, we had a public hearing.
We did.
This was approved.
It was.
And it went to the?
Council.
Council.
And they renewed it, they chose to renew it for one year.
And?
So the one year was more or less to set them up for this to come back through, with additional stipulations taken out of public concern. So what this would do, as if, if it's recommended for approval, would move to City Council, again, it has a different year stipulation, it has some other stipulations in it, again, that came out of that public meeting. So those, those would be the changes that go forward with the ordinance. So we could have, in essence, let this run for almost a year and then revisited it, but in order to keep A-PAC going and to, they, they have some funds to expend and things that they were planning for, and they need to know that this is, or what direction this is going, we'll put it that way. Did that answer your question, sir?
Okay.
Mark, and so this permit will be for just a 10-year period?
This would be for 10.
Okay.
Would we, would you like me to go through the stipulations now? I mean, I will, it's not that way, the public is aware of what's happening in case they have any questions that concern them.
Go with the stipulations.
Can definitely do that.
I would like that.
Thank you.
That's not a problem. Put them up here as best I can, too, so that everybody can see them. So these are the stipulations that go along with the special use permit. Future expansions of surface mining operations and additions to the site not identified on the current site plan will require submission of a revised special use permit and phasing plan. Improvements not shown on the phasing plan are not part of this approval. Subsurface mining shall be allowed via this special use permit. Prior to this action, detailed plans, including but not limited to engineering, internal layout, and other detailed plans or studies as requested by the city, shall be provided prior to work commencing. All subsurface mining operations, so this was, this was a stipulation that was changed after the public meeting. All subsurface mining operations shall maintain at a minimum the current setbacks listed upon the approved phasing plan. Access to underground mining operations from Phase 1, Stages 1 or 2 shall not be required to adhere to the internal setbacks indicated on the plan in order to reach Phase 1, Stage 3. I know that's a lot of stuff, and I will actually show that now, just so we know. This is their current phasing plan. And what the internal setback, sorry, the internal setback refers to is this area through here. This, this is a setback for their surface mining. In order, obviously, to go underground, they will be under this, so that setback does not pertain. They will go, it was from Phase 1, Stage 2, Phase 1, Stage 3, whichever route they can get under, they will go under and into this phase, Phase 1, Stage 3. Sorry, does that, am I, am I, am I making sense? I'm sorry, I just want to make sure everybody's, so, the current setbacks listed upon the approved, approved phasing plan, that is, that is this plan we're looking at, so what they have hashed out here in green is their current setbacks. Underground mining operations from Phase 1, Stages 1, or Stage 2 shall not be required to adhere to the internal setbacks indicated on the site plan. That's these inside here, because they have to get under them, so the setback is kind of null and void because it's on the surface and not underground. Okay? Revis and update the existing approved stormwater reports for Phase 1, Stage 3. These shall be submitted to the city within six months of the approval of this ordinance and subsequently approved by the city engineer and constructed by the applicant as deemed necessary. They already have some stormwater detention facilities and stormwater control methods in site already, so with the denuding and the excavation that'll occur in their new phase, I'm asking them to revisit the stormwater plan. Runoff would probably increase due to the reduced vegetation, as well as the hill itself. The hours of operation shall be as follows. Subject to filing of written public complaints on any of the individual operations, the removal of rock shall occur from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. Rock crushing, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and blasting from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Any blasting after 3:00 PM may be permitted only to meet federal blasting requirements or for emergency situations, with notification to and approval by city manager or his or her designated employee. Plans and specifications shall be submitted on each occurrence for each temporary use of a portable crusher, portable asphalt plant, and portable concrete ready-mix plant. Such plans, specifications, and operations of the temporary uses on each individual basis shall conform to all federal, state, and local requirements necessary to obtain any necessary permits prior to operation, but shall not require revisions to the amended special use permit. Hours of operation shall conform to those above observed by the quarrying operations. Number seven, reports of all inspections required by the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, the State Board of Agricultural Division and Water Resources. The Bureau of Mines, including insurance, inspections, or any other agency requirements, shall be provided to the city as they occur and are received. The applicant shall conform to all dust, noise, air, or any other environmental regulations applicable, and shall conform to the stated methods of control and operation contained in the application and environmental impact study. These shall include, but not limited to, the watering of internal roadways for dust control and all applicable dust control methods relating to the use of rock crushing equipment. Quarrying equipment shall not be visible from adjoining properties or from K-32 highway. All reclamation areas identified on the prior special use permits and approved, and the approved reclamation plan, including the southwest portion of the property and the east central portions of the property, shall be maintained to blend with the terrain surrounding the quarry. Trees in the reclamation areas shall be properly maintained, and all dead, dying, or diseased trees shall be replaced as soon as possible. The lowest elevation of the surface mine shall not be less than 735 feet above mean sea level. This is a change, but it was in your initial packet as well, back in February, so this was one of their initial requests, was to go lower. They're currently held at 820, and, and their tests and their drilling, they know there's good rock below that, so they want to go lower, so that, that one's been in there since, since it came back to you in February. Once per calendar year, the city will conduct an inspection of the operations. City authorized personnel shall be allowed on the site to conduct these inspections or to participate in any inspections deemed necessary by the city. Annual report for the quarrying operation shall be provided no later than March of each year, following the approval of the amended special use permit. The annual report shall include the status of the quarrying operation and the progress of reclamation. Number 14, annual blasting permit shall be, sorry, obtained from the city, and violation of blasting requirements may constitute justification to revoke the special use permit. All trucks leaving the site shall be covered to eliminate the potential spillage of rock on public roadways or damage to other property. Storm inlets on the east side of 121st Street shall be cleaned out to prevent accumulation of silt from proceeding further into the storm system. Public right-of-way that exists on the property currently may be vacated via appropriate action through the UDO. The public right-of-way shall be rededicated at a future time that allows for the extension of South 122nd Street or Stevenson Drive through the property. Site will not be utilized in the future as municipal or private landfill. Here is another one that came out of the meeting and came from A-PAC. The applicant shall contract with a local weather service to provide wind, speed, and direction, and temperature inversion information to ensure that the timing of blasting occurs when the weather conditions are the most conducive to reduce blasting effects, such as air pressure vibrations, dust issues for the surrounding residents. Twenty is another one, no blasting for surface extraction shall occur within 1,000 feet of a dwelling not owned or managed by the applicant, so that, that increased. Their setbacks are around 500 along most of where the houses are, the dwellings, so this will push them farther away from the dwelling, so they'll have to be 1,000 feet. It's not the property line, it is a dwelling owned by an individual. A-PAC Kansas will conduct pre-blast engineering surveys 12 months after a certificate of occupancy is issued. These inspections will be conducted via third-party provider for dwellings that receive certificates of occupancy after January 1 of 2024. Said dwellings must be within the 1,000-feet setback of the established setbacks. The revocation of the special use permit may occur for a violation of the Unified Development Ordinance or violation of any or all of the conditions set out in the special use permit. And the last one, the term of the special use permit shall be for 10 years. That time, oh, sorry, shall be for a 10-year period of time and only for Phase 1, Stages 2, 2 and 3, and Phase 2, unless said operation ceases for a period longer than six months where the property is sold. So those are the 23 stipulations. Out of them, four or five were new. Three or four of them came out of the public information meeting. Now, with that said, I will leave it at that.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'll call for a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
All right. Public hearing is opened at 6:55 PM. Mark, did you want to have the representative for the group speak first?
I think we can. Well, no, I mean, I guess, actually, we should proceed with those in favor and then go into, into them, yeah.
All right, at this time, is there any member of the public that would like to speak in favor of the special use permit application? If you would state your name and?
My name is Paul Barrett, 309 Oak, Union Bank and Trust and Chamber of Commerce Treasurer, Board Member. I spoke to you at the initial meeting, I have a letter, I didn't know if I could give it to you, I don't know what the protocol is, so I handed it to Mark, and he'll give it to you. That's, in a nutshell, what I had said at the initial meeting, and then after the public hearing that they had the other, well, last Thursday, I believe, the Chamber hearing that they had the other, other, well, last Thursday, I believe, the Chamber Board got together and wrote a letter in support. I want to be clear, it's not everybody on our board. Some people can't be in support of it because of their position, whether they're with the city, or with the company, or there might be someone who just didn't want to put their name to this letter. So, but there is myself and six others that are on the Board of Directors that are in support. And in summary, I'll just read why we are in support of it. Our background with Holiday Sand, which is part of CRH Company, as is A-PAC, has been a good Chamber member, supportive of a number of our projects that we have, whether it's Tiblo Days, whether it's the golf tournament, annual banquet, et cetera. There are also, I, I know for a fact, because I help out with the Education Foundation and some of their fundraising, they're a business partner with that, and Happy Hearts is another organization I know that they support. I, I don't know any others, I'm sure there are, but those are just ones that I'm personally involved with and, and, and am aware of. So, we view them as a good Chamber member, a good business partner in our community. And I spoke last time because of that, when it was determined that they don't own the real estate in Defen Ball. I was the one who, at that meeting, when I hear Defen Ball, I think of a landfill, my concern that it could be. I'm not saying that it would be, I'm just saying, when I hear that name, that's synonymous with a landfill. So, with, with that in mind, that's why I raised that question at the last meeting. My understanding is, this was approved unanimously at your, your last meeting, and it went to the city, and for the protest petition, also, A-PAC heard the voices of some of the neighbors, wanted to listen to them, and was willing to try to see what they could do to amend it. And I, in that letter, I think, I, I stated that they went from 18 to 22 stipulations. I see tonight it's 23, so I was mistaking there. And they also cut the term down, agreed to cut the term down from 20 years to 10 years. So, it, it, I'm sure it doesn't satisfy everybody's concerns, but they are a business, and there's certain things that they can do and, and cannot do. You know, and I can go into those if you want. From my perspective of underwriting and, and business, it's a pretty big capital expense that they're going to. If, if this is approved by the Planning Commission and the City Council, they're going to buy the ground. And that, to me, is the, the key component. If they buy the ground from Defen Ball, they then control it. And it's my understanding that if they buy the ground, there will be a deed restriction, that that property can never be a landfill. Okay? So if they sell it to somebody else, the city is, is filed that deed, unless the city and a future council wants to have a landfill there, that deed restriction remains. So the new property owner cannot put that in as a use. I think that's a huge win for the entire population of Bonner Springs. I don't envy you guys and your position, because you're never going to make everybody happy. But, in your position, I think you have to look at the entire population of Bonner Springs. So, to, to know that that would never be a landfill unless a future city council wants to have that to remove it, I think that is huge. Their intended use, when this is done, my understanding is, to convert it into a subtropolis-type property, which is what Lamar Hunt built over by Worlds of Fun. That would bring in a number of businesses to our community, and from a Chamber's perspective, that's more members, more support, and hopefully, they'll be like Holiday Sand, A-PAC, that they're a good business partner. Again, they could have just continued the way it was approved before, the 20 years, the 18 stipulations, but they heard, and they understood, they could do some things to, to negotiate and try to be a good neighbor. So, again, I appreciate your time, I don't envy your position. You guys don't get compensated enough to have to do these, but I applaud you for all you do in volunteering and, and representing the, the city. So, with that, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this issue? Okay?
We're not opposed, so, I mean, we'll, we'll speak on this side of it. Just, good evening, Commissioners, thank you for being here tonight. My name's Rob Richardson, with Richardson Brothers Development, and I've got a few things to say tonight, but I do want to thank A-PAC for the public meeting, I want to thank Mark for his hard work on this, and I do have copies of what I'm going to say here for you, just for your own benefit. So we understand that the last time this was here before you, some of you did have Since that, a group of over 30 folks have come together to provide you with additional concerns and additional proposed stipulations, even beyond what Mark has proposed tonight. I'd like those people to stand this evening. Thank you. I'm here as their spokesman. I'm a certified planner, and I've been doing this kind of work in the development world, public and private planning, for about, well, more than 30 years now. I've been on a team that represented a quarry expansion, and I've been on a city staff that worked with citizens to work out conditions with quarries as they move forward in their development. So I'm not unfamiliar with these issues. I want to take the time tonight to validate some of your reservations and present information that's likely to raise more reservations by this commission. To begin that, I think it's important to note an action taken on behalf of the mayor. The mayor, at the city council meeting when this was last considered, stated the impact of the quarry to the community is so significant, that he asked staff to notify 1,000 feet of a buffer area for neighbors. That's five times the legally required buffer area. The mayor thinks that this is significant, and we want to take this significant issue with extreme seriousness with you this evening. Not all, when I wrote this, I didn't have Mark's updated staff report, so some of the things in this are a little different, so I'm going to have to skip through some of my notes here, but the SUP, from this one to the previous one, before Mark's changes, made four basic changes to the SUP. A 10-year versus 20-year, requiring stormwater calculations, which I believe are required for the MPDS permit anyway, and to allow surface mining. That led neighbors to have some significant comments. One comment that we heard was, the quarry's been there for 100 years, what's the new problem? Well, in the past 25 years, the quarry's expanded significantly. The quarry is now more than 2,000 feet closer to existing homes on Kansas Avenue than it was in 1997. It's 1,000 feet closer since 2018, and it's 600 feet closer since 2020. This movement coincides with reported recent damage to nearby homes backed by engineering We know the mine's been there for a long time, but the situations have changed, and the conditions have changed, and we would ask you to consider that in your deliberations this evening. This is, this next part's a little troubling. At the neighborhood meeting last week, we were talking about a quarry formerly owned by A-PAC in Olathe, where there were certain blasting regulations put in place. Representatives of the quarry said they didn't know anything about that. Folks, I have to tell you that their name is on the attendance list of the people that were attendants at the meeting in Olathe that night when those blasting stipulations were approved, but yet they told us they knew nothing about them. That gives neighbors great concern about what is going, what is happening and what we're being told. We also asked the quarry about plans for future expansion. And while they said that would require them to buy more property, they didn't say they wouldn't do that. And I think it would be nice for them to answer that question this evening, because there's a large tract of property very close to them that is for sale. I want to talk a little bit about the findings of fact that are presented to you in your staff report, and these are very important as you move forward, because they are the basis of your decision this evening. Finding number two, the staff states that this activity does not contribute to and promote the welfare and convenience of the public. Now, there are other benefits, but he says in his staff report, it does not meet that condition. There's a but there, but the first statement is, it does not meet this condition. That's finding number two. Finding number three, there are claims, and I believe that you all have received an email from at least one person, showing you the outline of engineering reports and documentation of their foundation, that coincides with the timeline I gave you of quarry expansion. While property values may not have dipped, when somebody has to invest thousands and thousands of dollars into their home to keep that value up, that is a loss in value to them. They had to add extra capital to maintain a value. And that is where, I think, finding number three, that there have been damages, and there have been costs associated with this, and we don't feel like that condition is Findings number four and number seven, there are safety concerns here. The applicant has blocked the streets while blasting, just in case some rock would come out of the site. They blocked the streets with their own trucks, without permission from the city, from the police department, from the Public Works Director, and without the benefit of using the standards required by the Manual of Uniform Traffic Design to assure public safety. I don't believe that conditions four and seven are met. And on finding number six, they will remain, they, they have stated they will retain more water on site, Mark has said that. I don't believe this condition is met until there is a review of the new stormwater drainage plan, and I think we're fine with that being a condition, as long as that does stay a condition, and that would meet that finding number six. There's information in what I've handed out to you from Pitt and Quarry Magazine, and I'm not going to read all of it, but I'm going to give you some of the highlights. Pitt and Quarry is the agri industry's leading magazine, that's their claim, I read that, saw it on the internet, may or may not be true, but that's their claim. Blasting, they recognize blasting is what people fear the most. So how can agri producers, what they call, put up a stronger defense when blasting-related complaints and lawsuits arise? Number one, a best practice for the industry is, is to perform pre-blast surveys with help from third-party companies. I won't go into the details of that. Part of that is in here, but I don't understand in the stipulation if that only applies to new houses, based on certificates of occupancy, or if that would apply to existing houses. We're going to ask that that apply to existing houses, not just new houses. The gentleman writing the article says, "This needs to be a standard practice. If these homes are close to where you're blasting, it's wise to invest in this. It's like insurance and being a good neighbor to the people." That's from the Industry Magazine. They go on to say, "Don't ignore complaints," which I don't think that the quarry or the city have ignored the complaints, and has set up community meetings, which they have done, and we're grateful for those. But being transparent with the community, he says, that's all part of being a good neighbor, and that's what we're, I think the stipulations that we're going to propose are going to help with transparency, because transparency requires both sides to see, see through that. We do have a list of alternate stipulations, and I'll go through those briefly with you this evening. The first one is the issue of damage to existing homes. I've talked about that already a little bit, but the stipulations would be that by December 31, 2025, the applicant would survey all structures, anything with a foundation, including foundations within 2,000 feet of the mine's future boundary, where owners permit such survey. The survey must be done by a third party unrelated to the applicant and agreed to by the neighbors, and the applicant is required to identify the structures within the 2,000 feet of their future mine boundary that sit on or above of rock, a vein of rock, being or to be mined. One of the most significant issues that the neighbors see is the size of the blasting charge. And this is where the, the limits that were placed in Olathe are the limits that we're asking for here. These are the limits that the representatives of A-PAC were attending in Olathe when these were passed, and that is the .3 inches per second peak particle velocity at the property line. That's less than what they've been blasting, but yet they, they have also not been blasting to their upper limits, and yet we're still seeing damages. So we want that blasting limit reduced. We realize that to do that, they will have to blast more often, but with lower charges, and we understand that, that will create additional blasting. We agree with the stipulation on blasting times, Friday, Monday through Friday, and I am to 3:00 p.m. With hours of general operation, we would prefer the hours of general operation to be eight to five. We agree with the 1,000-foot setback that Mark stipulated in his stipulations this evening. There's an exhibit of what that would look like in your packet. We discussed a little bit at the, at the neighborhood meeting that A-PAC hosted last week about truck traffic, and most of the streets around there are not truck routes, but yet trucks find their way onto them, and so the city has, Mark said that he would work with the city to get those signs put up where they're, where they don't exist today to keep those trucks off residential streets. I think you'll hear from some people that we have got young drivers, we've got moms with kids, and we've got dump truck drivers with big, heavy trucks going too fast, and we want to make sure that there are no injuries related to those things. Related to the landfill issue, I appreciate that the, the new deed will have a deed restriction benefiting what's now, it was Defen Ball, it's now Waste Management, that says that A-PAC can never operate that as a quarry. I would ask that that deed restriction be increased to include adjacent neighbors, because the way the deed restriction works, if it's benefiting me, I can change it. So, Waste Management sells it to A-PAC, A-PAC does their stuff, 100 years from now, it gets sold back to Waste Management, they could, they could possibly eliminate that deed restriction, but that wouldn't happen if it was to the benefit of the neighbors unless they agreed. Mark talked about, number eight on my points there, about the plans. Anything that's not in the plan now, we believe that those plans should be submitted and reviewed in a public, open forum through a site plan review process that you all have in your ordinance, so that they would be open for public review, and the public could see what they're doing, and it's not just a behind-the-doors, city-initiated review Related to the weather and the wind, we would request that no blasting during a temperature inversion or wind that would carry dust through the property line. In the, in the public meeting, they said that they either had to blast it or coordinate everything off and keep everybody out of it until they could blast in the future. We're much, we prefer that they coordinate off anything that wasn't blasted and wait till the appropriate weather conditions to blast, rather than get permission from the city manager or whoever to blast when it might be a detriment to the neighbors. Mark had dust control in his, in his staff recommendations, we appreciate that, as well as the stormwater quality. I think that Mark had the revised reclamation plan in his, and we would agree with that, but we also think that should be done through a site plan review process. And we would ask that the applicant install and maintain seismographs on their property line adjacent to, or across the right-of-way from any adjacent property, as requested by the property owners now or in the future, so that those blasting levels and those particle-per-second volumes are maintained and measured over time. The lower they are, the less vibration it costs, causes when it gets to homeowners, and the, the less chance there is of damage, and we want to make sure that we can maintain and monitor, monitor that. We would like a process for neighbors to be able to submit claims and concerns and violations, violations to the city or, or the applicant, so that's defined, and everybody knows who to call. You know, what number do you call, who do you call to get a hold of if something goes on? Because it's not realistic to think that some employee at some point in the future isn't going to do the wrong thing, and have an accident, you know, they, they miss the time, or something happens. Despite their best efforts, sometimes things go bad, right? So we need to play a way for folks to address those issues. As Mark said, this would, this action, if approved by, you know, recommended by you and approved by the city council, would replace the current one-year SUP. We would ask that they would, and they've stated that they would, but there's Chinook Killer Copter training that happens, and ironically, class Thursday night after we left, here come the Chinooks. And they hover there for quite a while, and as you know, they're loud. And so, they've said they would discontinue that once they own the property, and we would ask that that be a stipulation. We've asked for the five-year term of the SUP, but if, if you are willing to move forward with a greater list of our stipulations, then we would agree to the 10-year as well. And the last one was related to the quarry, the right-of-way within the quarry, Mark's stipulation addressed... Mark's stipulation addresses that. Finally, the neighbors understand the importance of this business for the business, their employees, the business owners, the community, the tax base, their charity work. We understand these stipulations are more costly than they want, but we're trying to work together as a community and work together. And I think that what we've offered is a way that they, the neighbors feel protected, and it will eliminate future adverse claims against the applicant, and I think it will help everyone to work better in the future together. I know Mark said people could have five minutes. I've asked the folks that stood with me not to take more than a minute or two if they were able to speak, to save your time. But I do appreciate your time tonight. I hope that you're able to approve this with our additional stipulations this evening. And as was stated before, I don't envy your job of making these decisions, but I do appreciate your time and your attention this evening. I would, I can answer questions now or later if you have those.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
When people bought their property, were they aware?
Nick, will you please turn your microphone on? Sorry. Thank you.
When people bought their property, their homes, were they aware that there was a quarry there? Were they told that?
In some cases, I don't think they were, and in some cases, it wasn't as close as it is today. And I had a conversation with somebody beforehand, you know, if I would have known, maybe I wouldn't have done this. And I said, and the information was there. It was publicly available. And I, you know, said, "You did come to the nuisance." But this is an expansion, and the expansion has, you know, some of these homes, I don't know if any of them have been there a hundred years, but they're, maybe they have, but many of them have been there a long time, and it's been kind of peacefully coexisting. And once the quarry started moving north, then they started seeing issues. And so I think that that's where the rub comes. I mean, it's, you have something been there so long, but it's been in this place, and then you don't realize how fast it can move towards you. And I think the quarry recognizes that. I mean, they've been willing to move forward on some of these stipulations, but I think that's where I would come in on that. Does that answer your question?
Well, I'm just wondering what obligation the people who sold the property to individuals have when something like that happens? Because, you know, it just doesn't seem quite right. You should have a disclosure. And as far as insurance goes, does your insurance company know that? And do they deal with that? It's just, they're just questions that I have because I've bought property.
And I'll tell you, I've been doing public hearings like this on controversial issues like this for 30 years. I've never got a good answer to that. Although I will say that I, when I've gone to purchase property, I said, "What's going to be in this field behind you?" And the person representing the property, "Oh, that's going to be cows forever." And there's already a picture of the commercial development coming behind it on the other road. And so I do know that things like that happen, but I hope that didn't happen here, but it is, you know, those things are very hard to prove after the fact, because sometime, you know, I could go into more, but those are very hard to prove after the fact.
Are there any other questions at this time?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. At this time, would anyone else like to speak against this issue? You would state your name, please, and address.
Sorry, technical difficulties. Ricky Ledgerwood, 704 South 122nd Street. I want to begin by expressing my sincere appreciation to this planning commission for allowing us to speak tonight regarding special use permit 0125. It's a privilege to have a voice in this process, and I know my neighbors, and I do not take it lightly. I am here today to express my support of the neighborhood group and to share a few concerns that reflect broader sentiment in our community. To be clear, we recognize and respect the value that the Rock Quarry brings to the city of Bonner Springs. I've lived here for many years and by the quarry for many years. We understand it provides jobs, contributes to infrastructure, and has a history of operation that is deeply connected to the city's development and economic health. However, the reality is that the city grows and residential development expands. The impact of the quarry operations, excuse me, the impact of the quarry operations on nearby homes and families also grows. And with that growth comes a responsibility to carefully balance industrial activity with quality of life for residents. One of our primary concerns is the issue of dust. As you know, dust particles, when properly contained or mitigated, can become, when not properly contained and mitigated, can become a health risk. You know, particularly to young children, those respiratory sensitivities. We live here. Our kids play here. My kids are sitting right up front. And I just wanted to bring this up. I know it's sitting in item number eight, however, I think it needs to be heard. Another concern is the ongoing noise and blasting associated with the quarry's operations. These disruptions are not occasional. They are constant, as it feels sometimes. We are concerned not only with the immediate effect on our daily lives, but about the potential for the decreased property values and how that might affect future development and long-term growth in our area. If families hesitate to move into the neighborhoods near industrial activity, we could see long-term stagnation in parts of our community that otherwise pose a positive expansion, such as the property, or the Boy Scout Trust property. With that in mind, we believe that greater setbacks for residential properties could make a significant difference, increasing the distance between active quarry zones and families' homes, could help reduce noise, dust exposure, and visual disruptions, leading to better quality of life for nearby residents. Setbacks are a simple, effective way to create respectful space between industrial use and residential living. We are not asking for the quarry to shut down. We are asking for measured consideration, for thoughtful planning that acknowledges both sides and seeks to protect the livability of our neighborhood. In closing, I want to again thank the commission for your time, because it is important. We appreciate the opportunity to share our perspective, and we trust that our concerns will be taken seriously as you make the decision that shapes the future of Bonner Springs and our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
You'll state your name and address, please.
Julia Parker, 12520 Kansas Avenue in Bonner Springs, Kansas. I can address your question, Mr. Perica, in that when we purchased our home in 2018, there was not a necessity of a disclosure of any blasting or mining activity due to the fact that at that time, it was not a nuisance to the residents and to our home, which had been there since 1909 or 1920-ish. And after we purchased our home early 2019, I noticed that blasting seemed to be a little bit more noticeable closer to our home, at which time I contacted the quarry, and I was taken up the chain of command, and they said, "Oh, no, we're, you know, we're within the Bureau of Mines. You're just feeling that because those are the aftershocks, kind of like a drop in the pond." The family that had owned my home prior to us had lived there for over 30 years, and they maintained the property directly to the east of us, right next door. They contacted me in early 2019 and said, "Hey, we are so sorry. We don't know what's going on. We've never experienced blasting like this before in the last 30 years that we've maintained this property." If we had known that blasting was going to be like this, we would have disclosed it, and they were very, very distraught about it. So that's kind of the history as to what was going on. And in continuation from 2019 into 2020, we noticed continual changes. No longer were any of our doors shutting. Our floors were shifting. My staircase pulled out of the top landing and twisted around its main frame, and a main support beam in our roof line pulled out of the ceiling about two inches. We now have it supported by a support beam. I contacted the quarry multiple times, and eventually, we were offered a legal team pro bono through Veterans Community Project, who contacted the quarry, and we arranged meetings to discuss what's going on. We also had regular seismograph meetings through Vibrotec to discuss what was going on. And I kept saying, "Hey, guys, I understand you're within the Bureau of Mines regulations, but we have damage, and I'm not making it up. I have actual structural engineering reports, as well as the pre-inspection of our home before we bought it, to compare." I also obtained two independent foundation experts' opinions on our home, as well as a scope of work necessary. Both of those reported over $40,000 worth of foundation damage with differential settling, which is opposing directionality, twisting around the main room of our home. That's not normal for any kind of soil. It's not due to drainage. It's not due to anything else other than a force outside of our home acting upon our home. We are directly north of the quarry, and so this was actual verifiable data that I could have. I spoke with Kyle Garsting on multiple occasions, and they gave me their insurance company to talk with. I spoke with their insurance company. They said, "Well, when did you notice the damage was happening?" I said, "Early 2019." And they said, "You know what? No, that's not us then. We're not responsible. That's the first insurance company before us." Do you know, I sent them an email, and I called that previous insurance company. Did they ever respond? No. And I spoke with Kyle about that again. Through our legal team, they sent an email to APAC, and APAC sent a cease and desist of these baseless accusations. So this is how they have interacted with those of us residents that have verifiable damage thus far. So my hope is, with additional parameters of setbacks, 1,000 feet would be great, so that no one else has to go through this nightmare. We have had to encounter a lot of cost on our own. We have received no help for it. Multiple thousands of dollars. $48,000 plus siding, because our siding was separating, because our foundation was shifting. So that is kind of the history that's been going on here. These are not emotions. This is facts, okay? This is the history that's been going on with our home, which didn't previously have foundation damage. So I do feel like these stipulations that we're asking for are not unreasonable, and I would like for you to consider them to protect the safety and well-being of residents that are nearby the quarry for the long term. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone else that would like to speak against the issue? You'd state your name, please, and address.
Thank you. Kevin Strauthman, 12430 Avenue. You asked about being notified when we purchased the property. We purchased the property in the fall of 2020. I do not believe, or actually, next-door neighbors with Julia. I do not believe it was disclosed. I found out later about the quarry. But what I was told after digging into it was they were about done quarrying or mining up by our property, which I believe is true. Now they're asking to go deeper, and that is why I'm concerned, right? We have had $30,000, $40,000 worth of damage to our basement. Had to have it peered twice, had some issues also that we haven't had fixed yet. I was willing to live with that, I guess, because I thought this was going to go away and move to the other, to the other part of the site. So my concerns are, now they want to stay where they're at. I appreciate the setback and the further, the 1,000 feet, I believe that is necessary, and I do appreciate that. I just want to touch real quick on, there's no blast limit in the stipulations here or in the restrictions, and I do believe there needs to be one. And they've already agreed to the one that we have proposed. They agreed to that. I know they don't own the quarry anymore, but they did agree to that when they owned it. And the one thing I would say is, I went back and reviewed their blasting over the last year. I do not believe that all of their blasts have been above that limit. So the new threshold that we're proposing, I think a lot of their blasts fall within that limit. They definitely have blasted above that before, so it would reduce some of their blasts. I would also say that it doesn't make sense to me, they've only blasted, they said this themselves, a third of what they are allowed to do. I mean, I can only imagine what that would be, the damage that would do, right? So if we leave this, these guys may say, or the current company employees may say, "Well, we're not going to do it. We're not going to blast up to that limit." But it doesn't stop somebody from doing it in the future. And so I really urge you to look at that issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this issue?
I think I had two seconds left, and I forgot one thing. Julia Parker, 12520 Kansas Avenue. Last point. We did successfully win our appraisal request for a reduction in taxes based on the condition of our home due to the damages. So we have, through the county, been noticed to say, "Hey, yeah, your home is devalued because of these conditions of your home." And so that is also a verifiable, noticeable fact that our home has been devalued due to the blasting, and will affect its sellability in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. You would state your name and address, please.
My name is Megan McCully-Moore. I live at 541 South 118th Street, right next to the Boy Scout camp and not far from the Rock Quarry. I currently live in the home that I was raised in, the home that my father, with the help of my uncle, built nearly 30 years ago. I'm here tonight as a mother, a daughter, a homeowner, a neighbor, and a member of this community to ask you to vote against the special use permit for another 10 years. Let me be clear, this isn't just about the noise or inconvenience. It's about the long-term health, safety, and livability of our community. For years, my family has dealt with the consequences of living near this operation, and I can tell you they're not minor inconveniences. They are real, personal, and growing. 10 more years of blasting, dust, and diesel truck traffic will increase risk for respiratory problems for children, seniors, and anyone with asthma. The fine particulate matter from this quarry operation doesn't just disappear. It stays in the air we breathe, the water we drink, and the soil that we walk on. These risks grow more severe over time. A 10-year extension would lock our community into a decade of declining air and water quality. This is not a temporary nuisance. That's a public health hazard. We have seen a significant increase in dust on our property. Clouds of dust as you drive down the road, dust and gravel piled high, curb-high, blocking the storm drain inlets, loose gravel falling from the trucks leaving the quarry. We've experienced illegal closures by the, of the road by the Rock Quarry personnel that disrupts our daily routines. My son's a junior at the high school and drives to school every day, often sharing the road with these dump trucks that are not stopping at the stop sign leaving the Rock Quarry. This is also the same route that the bus takes my girls to elementary school, and it terrifies me. Now for the more obvious, the damage to our home and property likely from the vibrations caused by the blasting. This isn't just frustrating, it's costly, and it's damage that shouldn't be considered normal for any homeowner. Extending this permit for another 10 years would be locking our community into a future more of the same, more dust, more damage, and more danger, with no accountability or guarantee of change. And here's the reality, most of the benefit goes to the Rock Quarry. We bear the burden. I understand that business needs to operate, but there must be limits, especially when the cost is high. If the council is considering a permit extension at all, it should be short-term with strict oversight, clear community protection, regular public review, and performance standards that must be met. 10 years is not a compromise, it's a sacrifice, and I'm not willing to accept that for my children. Many of us are here tonight because we care about this place. We've experienced years of noise, dust, and vibrations. We've watched truck after truck erode our roads, increased traffic risks. This isn't about stopping the progress, it's about prioritizing people over profit. I urge you to stand with us and deny the renewal for the special use permit. At the very list requires a shorter permit with strict environmental and safety oversight. We're asking you to stand with us to protect our homes, our health, and our future. Thank you for your time and your service to our community.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time? You would state your name and address, sir.
My name is James Dominic Davis. I go by Mick. The address is 12700 Kansas Avenue. I don't have a prepared statement. I'm kind of late to the show on this one, but my mother, I'm a third-generation owner of this land at 12700, right across from Walmart. My grandfather purchased the land, and I've learned from Eric, my neighbor, that a lot more history about it. I just know that I used to mow it, like 54 acres, once a month when I was growing up from 13 years old all the way through college. My grandfather, Mickey Alterio, owned the land. He passed away in 1997, passed it to my mother, who passed away last July, and now I'm the oldest grandson, and I'm responsible to steward this land for my family and my children and theirs. So I just want to give you a comment. Walking into this, the maintenance involved with trying to maintain these beautiful lakes that spring-fed and the beautiful land that I worked so hard in my life, I didn't really appreciate it until I came back and it became my responsibility. I come into this, and I've got Old Dominion on one side dumping all of their muddy water that comes into our spring-fed comes into our spring-fed lake and turns it into a brown, it looks like a cesspool. Good news about that is I've met with the site manager who brought in the regional manager, who brought in the environmental people today, and they're going to improve their wastewater system management. So that's a, that's a good news story for, for the Davis-Alteri family, right? I represent my brother-in-law. He couldn't be here today. The other side's Walmart. And Walmart likes to let all their trash run in and blow out of their parking lot into my ponds and my lake and my trees. I spent three and a half hours fishing out Walmart bags and little, all kinds of trash out of that yesterday, about a five-pound bag, a 25-pound bag full of trash. I notified the local, or the regional manager for wastewater, for polluting, and I'm waiting to hear back from that. So that's two arms of the pincher. The third one is, now we've got blasting going on, and I could show you pictures of our wall to confirm what some of these other people, where it has separated the brick from the vibration. I know the company, APEC, I guess sent and put a seismograph out there, hired by their own people, and then told my mother at the time, "Oh, no, it's not causing, there's no problem here." Well, I got a guy coming out tomorrow to, to do an estimate on how to repair that wall. It's a very significant brick wall that would be very expensive if it falls. There, these people's concerns are real. I mean, I'm, I'm on the corner there, kind of right by all the development, and it's even worse on three sides for us. I don't know the answer to it. I don't know that stopping them from blasting is going to help, but there needs to be something done if we want to maintain the integrity of this community and what we live in, because you represent us. And like I said, I, I'm new to the game. I'm actually a Florida resident, but I will be moving back here. All right? I'm a retired Marine, and I'm going to retire for good, to take care of that and take care of my older, my father. Okay? And these people need to be heard, because it's real. Just come out, come visit. 12700, give me a call. We'll go out and we'll take a look, and we'll see some of the damage that's going on. And I understand the commerce and the, and the taxes, and, and I'm not naive to that. All right? But there also needs to be some concessions. All right? Thank you for, for hearing me.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone else that would like to speak? You would state your name and address, sir?
Yes, Robert Chadwick. I go by Chad. I'm at 642 McGrath Wood, and my family, we own three houses on McGrath Wood, which happens to be the west side of the quarry. I actually own 40 acres there, too. And I just want, I appreciate what you guys go through as far as planning and zoning. I do want to make sure that you understand that this is not a new problem. In 93, I was on a committee with several people from Lake of the Forest to challenge the use that Lone Star was blasting, and we got them to actually change their blasting system to where instead of it was just one loud bang, boom, they did the staggered. But that was 93, and that was Lone Star, and then it was Shawnee Rock, and then it was Duffin-Bah, and now it's Apex. And so this is the same program. We have issues with foundations. I think that, that the city understands that there are issues, but I also think we need to leave, let Apex and the owner of the property be accountable for what they're doing to this neighborhood, this community. People on Kansas Avenue have it a lot worse now, where I had it several years ago, because they were closer to my property. But as we continue on trying to guarantee that they will stay in town, they will purchase the property, we need to be totally transparent and be sure that we hold them accountable, or whoever is going to be working the, the quarry, that they understand that all of this causes damage. All of this causes issues, whether it's blocking the road, whether it's blasting, and the length, the time, the time of year, it makes all the difference. I know I went through this with quite a bit in 93. And the fact that they did change to a 10-year special use permit as what they're requesting is a win, but I think we need to consider some other stipulations in the special use permit so that there's accountability there, and we can understand, and we can feel like we actually are working with them and working with the city so that our properties don't lose value. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Let's see, I've lost track. Where was that? One moment. All right, this time, are there any questions for staff? So, as I did last time, and I'll go ahead and state it again, that since I share a border with the Apex, my property at 533 McGrath Wood Street, I'm going to be recusing myself from all discussion or any voting on this, on this particular item. And for what it's worth, I filed a, for the helicopter flights, I filed a flight safety violation with the Kansas City FISDO. So we'll see how the federal government can handle getting those helicopters out of here.
We got, uh, I will have to ask you to leave the room though, sir. Sorry.
Do you need me to leave the, leave the-
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Mark, the stipulations that were presented by the gentleman earlier, is this your first opportunity to see them, or do you have a response to them?
I'm not sure if those were the ones we used in the public meeting, but if it is, I did respond to those best I could, and some of those made it into the staff report.
Okay.
Are those the same ones?
They're pretty close.
Okay. Are there any other questions for staff at this point?
Is applicant here tonight?
Applicant is here, yes.
Okay. Are there any questions for the applicant at this time? All right. And are there any-
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Jerry.
I'd like to learn a little bit more about the blasting charge size.
That would require the applicant-
There's someone here that can answer that question?
Yep. The applicants are here. They can discuss that.
My name's Dan Jones. I'm with Apex, and I'm going to have our blasting consultant come up and talk about that.
Good evening. I'm Doug Redenko with Vibrotech Engineers. And you had a question about the blasting chart, charges?
Yeah, the charge, the limits, the blast limits. I just needed a little more clarification as to what size, I guess that would be the proper term, that you're using to blast so close to the houses, and can you scale it back at all?
Okay. You need a different person. You, you want to know about the blast charge?
The charge itself, you know, the size.
John Olson, Buckley Potter. We are the contract blaster for Apex. As far as the blast charge size, it's dependent on the ledge depth. The, the holes get drilled from the top of the ledge, rock ledge, to the bottom of said rock ledge. There are multiple rock ledges within this quarry. They range in a depth of about five foot to currently about 21 feet. So we fill a percentage of the hole with, with, with explosives. There's not really a way to limit that blast charge. We're kind of dictated by the rock, by the geology, essentially.
Can you re-
Go ahead, Larry.
Can you respond? And the proposed stipulations, and you, I'm sure you have not read these, but it says that we propose a limit for this application is 3/10ths inches per second peak particle velocity at the property line, with any property not zoned as industrial. Can you explain that terminology?
Can you read it one more time? It says 3/10ths-
John.
Yeah, that's fine. We're going to go back and forth. I'm blasting, he's-
That's fine. All right, so 0.3 inches per second peak particle velocity, that's a measure of the ground vibration. Okay? So when they blast, the detonation of the explosive has two effects, one that travels through the ground, one that travels through the air. So what you're talking about is the, the level of ground vibration. You've heard the discussion tonight about the Bureau of Mines limits, okay? Those are the limits that are in place, as I understand it, in the county, and I believe in the state. There's many states across the United States, about half of them, half of the states in the United States regulate blasting. They use that limit. The states that don't, don't regulate anything at all pertaining to, to blasting. In, in Kansas, explosives are regulated by the fire marshal. There is a code, it's called NFP 495. That's the code that regulates explosives that the fire marshals use. In that document, they also use the Bureau of Mines criteria for ground vibration limits. So I think that's what you're asking me about, so, yeah.